Does this stink working?
Keep trying, we'll let you know.
Thanks for putting this back because it takes me half a dozen steps to go over there. I quit breathing into it. A couple, a couple of meetings ago in last meeting, we talked about the, the new dry run having erosion along the, along the concrete swale between Fifth and Sixth Avenue Southwest. Tonight when I come down here, I looked over at that area and that concrete swale is completely level with water right now. I know it's being pumped around the Fourth Street intersection. I don't know if that's picking up other stormwater someplace, but it's not draining. And so if we got a, a new dry run creek project to remove water quickly out of the floodplain, it's gonna, when it comes down to that area, it's already got water in it. It's gonna overflow right away and erode the banks. And I think we've already seen that. You can see the area where we reseeded and put dirt back in there. Which then brings us back to the old part of the old dry run up between Second Avenue Northwest and Fourth Avenue Northwest, where there's been water standing there for quite some time. And at the last council meeting, we heard that there was a raw sewage release into that, into that area. I, last Saturday drove down there and walked around. It stinks like a sewer down there. Why haven't we pumped that out? We have four inch and six inch trash pumps. We have plenty of hose that we can run it over to another manhole and pump that area dry. And I know that there's a overflow from Wartburg for the chillers in their buildings that comes somewhere in that area. I'm not sure if it's between Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue or not, but I couldn't find the outlet on any of the other streets. So I'm assuming it's in that area. If that is feeding that, so that we can't never pump that out because it constantly refills itself, well, then we have to get a pump like they have on Fourth Street that's pumping the water around the intersection and into a storm drain outlet. But we, it's, it's against our ordinances. We have the co-ordinances that talk about nuisances and one of those is standing water, stagnant water. And with sewage mixed into it, it's definitely a health hazard. So if somebody's got to file a complaint about a nuisance against the city of Waverly, then I guess it will be me. Because that is a nuisance and it should be taken care of. And it's been going on before last meeting. It's had a week to do that. It don't take that long to get some trash pumps up there and set them up and get them running and take care of that problem. So, the city's gotta decide if they're gonna live up to their own ordinances or they just make ordinances for other people to live up to. Thank you.
Point taken. Won't call for the response, but we heard that we need to address it. Yes?
Um, we were working at the pool today, so the pool discharges into the dry run. So that's probably why it was wet today.
The thing that you'll see is with Wartburg's discharge of the coolers, that water will now make it all the way down to the south end of the project.
Very good. Any other public comments on any items not on tonight's agenda? Then we move to regular business item number one, which is an item on the study session night because we'd like to enter into contract with Mr. Butch K. for engineering services to assess and hopefully soon repair the green bridge. I'd like to ask Butch if you'd be willing to come forward and, and say a few words before we tackle this proposal.
Be happy to. If I get close enough to the microphone. This is much better than that one, I have to agree. What would you like to hear? I've looked at the bridge and I've looked at the VJ report. I've found a number of errors in the computation and the computer program they use for evaluating the trusses. I'll just drop to the bottom line. The trusses are fully capable of carrying what they were originally designed to carry and to carry the 90 pound per square foot live load that we'd put on it by either restoring it to the level it was before it was closed or by putting a footbridge on it, making it all a footbridge. That's as far as I've gotten. I do agree that we need to take a look at four of the bearing locations and we need to look at the floor stringers underneath. I'm not so concerned about the framing that was done in 1967. That's the lower cord portion and the work we did in 1983. But there are a couple of stringers that may need some attention. Whether we can open the bridge before that's done or after, I haven't decided yet. I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Oh, that's fairly optimistic.
I think it's optimistic. The decision's gonna have to be the council, so, I mean, you have two engineering firms saying it should be closed and we have one who says it can probably be opened. And I say probably because I haven't looked at those stringers.
Well, that's helpful and we're probably gonna call you back up. We're going to make, take a motion unless you just feel, be willing to stand there for a while so we can address questions. Yeah, but let's do it under, after, let's get started on this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So do you like the motion, David?
Sure. I move resolution 15 dash 124 approving a professional services agreement with Cedar Valley Engineering for inspections and repair assessment for the Third Street Southeast Bridge for the lump sum of $10,000 or $10,050.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Council discussion.
I have a, a question, I guess for, for Butch, sorry. So the, the work that you're proposing to do and you're saying that it would take care of either pedestrian or pedestrian and vehicular traffic at the level that it was before it was closed.
The trusses are, are so far, yes.
So far. Is there a possibility that by looking at the other things that you just mentioned that you haven't looked at yet? That you, that that would change your opinion on that?
It's possible. Though what, what the proposal was to, was to evaluate the situation, give you a third opinion, if you will, and determine what I felt needed to be done to restore it. The second phase, which is not up for consideration this evening, is to prepare plans and specifications for whatever repair is necessary. Now, there is some carryover between the two, or there may be. As an example, when I checked the stringers, neither of the first two firms actually got down and looked at the stringer to floor beam connection because the decking's in the way. They chose not to cut it away. Nor did they come from underneath to take a look at it because the worst stringers happen to be over the most water. When I look at it in the next few days, I'll have to make a decision and a recommendation back to council that we take the time to either pick up the deck so we can more closely inspect the stringer to floor beam connection or we're okay.
May, may I ask a follow-up question then too, or a different question, I guess? If, if, if we were to move ahead with this, then, let's assume that there is no additional work required in terms of what you just described might be a possibility. Would the repairs be necessary for both pedestrian and vehicular? Cause as you probably know, we've also had some citizens who've said they would prefer it to be pedestrian. So I'm just wondering what, what the, what's the minimum that's required for pedestrian?
Yes, if it, it's necessary, it would be necessary for both cases. Because the live load that we're putting on it vehicular wise is 90 pounds per square foot. So is the design load for pedestrians. Now, I have to tell you, part of the reason that old bridge has lasted as long as it has is we got rid of the wood decking, which hid all of the rusting and, and corruption that would occur below it. We won't even talk about the horses that used to run across it. So when we put the open decking in, we also cut away a lot of the fluff, the steel fluff, so that could be more readily cleaned and taken care of. If you talk about taking that metal deck up, you do two things. Number one, you add dead weight. Almost about 60 some pounds a square foot based on what I've seen so far. That's gonna take more away from the live weight. Number two, that decking actually is part of the structural assembly. In 1983, when we put that decking down, we put it down and welded it to the stringers so that the compression portion of the stringer, which was deteriorated in many cases because of all of the contamination, was taken up by that decking. Now, if you take that off and put wood on, then you may be faced with replacing a lot more stringers than what we're looking at now. I think there's a lighter way. If you wanna get rid of the open grating, if you turn it into a pedestrian bridge, there's a lighter way of doing it than putting the wood back on.
Thank you.
Butch, I saw you, obviously we're out on, on the bridge. I think you'd marked on six stringer ends that were probably bad.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
I'm guessing that's what the number is. Yeah, I haven't looked at it, the boys marked them.
Oh, okay. Is there been any consideration now that you'd call it a header that go across between the, you know, that would tie all those stringers together?
That's the floor beam between the, yeah, the panel points. We've looked at those and the connections at the end and we don't find, so far I don't find them to be a particular problem. The reports talked about pack rust. Yeah, there is pack rust there. It's really quite, an eighth of an inch is not a significant amount of pack rust. Remember that that, those connections were replaced in 1967. So you have, what, 40, 50 years on those now. They're not showing a lot of rust. If, if there was one thing I would do for sure, anyway, to keep the bridge open, is to sandblast and paint the bottom half.
I was just wondering, if we go and replace the stringers that are bad and then the other ones are allowed to continue to deteriorate, or as they would over time, would it come to a point that we'd have to redo that or would it be prudent to just do all the stringers on the bottom if you really wanna make it?
Well, if, yeah, if, if you wanna do that, you, you could. I'm not sure it would, it would work out for lifecycle costing though. It might be more, that's a lot of steel. There's 49 of those nine inch by 21 pound per foot stringers, 18 foot long. So that's a lot of steel, a lot of work. And it would probably be the most expensive part of refurbishing it. And, and I don't know, I, I would have to look at that and say, I'm not sure that's repair anymore. You know what the question that brings up then?
Now, as far as the bearing points, you were just talking about the north and the south bearing points are the ones that are worse.
Those are the worst ones, yeah.
Where the salt spills over onto them, I'm sure is probably.
And, and the, the rockers, we haven't used rockers in bridges for years.
And you just cut those?
That's old technology. We just cut those out, replace them with a slip plate. So, and the concrete doesn't look pretty, but most of it is superficial. We could, if it was a concern, we could go in and do what we call dental concrete. We've done that on the west retaining wall at the river. We did it on the dam before they tore it out. And we did one little corner on the, on that bridge, which has already cracked because the water from the approach drains into the top of that spot and they had a little freeze saw action, but.
Just for, just for reference, so what is your, you have $10,050, how do you arrive at that cost?
It's our, I have a breakdown, which I didn't provide, but it's a, the estimated hours to do the analysis times our usual rate.
Anywhere we could see that at some point. There.
And given what you've seen so far, does that affect anything about the original estimate you gave us in your letter before you got to see the bridge again?
It, if we wanted to do it right, it might be a little bit higher, but not much. I think that, like I said, the biggest thing would be cutting out the floor deck units and putting them back in. That was not in the original price. But that seems to be the only way to actually check those that are critical. But if there's only six of them, as Dan pointed out, well, we're only talking about three or four deck units and that's not a big deal. But otherwise, they're every two feet, so it's 150 of them.
You, you mentioned that you found some errors in the previous contractor's calculations. Wouldn't they use some type of modeling software?
Well, they did, but it's like any other software. You remember the old saying, garbage in, garbage out? And they made a few entry errors, whether they're just typographical or what, but unfortunately the error was carried through to the final calculation. And, and the bottom line is that they indicated that the lower cord in the center of each span had to be reinforced. That's not true. That's not necessary.
So is that, is that a calculation error or is that a, just a difference of engineering opinion?
No, I would say it's a data entry error. Yeah, because they, they've offered all the documentation and it, it wasn't that hard to follow.
Time frame, what are we looking at for?
For the answer?
Yeah.
Since I've already begun the work.
Get the bridge open by next week or something.
I don't think that's gonna happen that quickly, but nice try. I think we should have a, a, um, final and, or not a final answer, but a preliminary report. Well, it may end up being the final report too. Depends about what we, what we run into when I do look underneath where the scaffolding is.
When?
For when? Well, it, it could be even as early as your meeting on the sixth, I think. But Carla tells me I can't have agenda items unless I give her two weeks' notice. That's what the council says.
I think we could.
You could slide it in, huh? If it's ready, I'll let you know and, and because in all honesty, I could give it to you in advance and you might not really understand what I gave you anyway.
That's true.
Until I go through it.
Yeah, we're sure interested in expediting everything, so we'd appreciate.
Be next week, right, only? And that's the next meeting?
That's the next meeting. Yep.
So really, so tonight, like we just talked about, we're just giving you to do your analysis of everything, come back with, if there's anything that,
My, the rest of my opinion.
Could be open right now or we need to do a couple fixes first, that kinda stuff. If you find things need to be fixed, then we go into phase two, which is when you actually lay out piece by piece what needs to be fixed.
Yeah, because clearly the work is going to, if for instance, we cut out the, the rockers and replace them, it's gonna be over 25 grand by the time you bring somebody in to do it. So your ordinance is required that it be put out for competitive bid.
Well, you're still saying there's an actual chance that nothing may have to be done at all?
There is a chance, yes, but it also depends upon how long you think the thing might last. And the, and the bearing points are, are really what concern me more than anything else right now. The stringers don't even concern me that much because that decking we put down in 83 actually will carry the load from, and skip a stringer without collapsing.
My last, I have one last question, but how much has the VJ engineering report helped you in saving you time or those kinda stuff? That going into what you're doing right now?
I don't know that it saved me any time because I still had to go through it manually to find out what the answer was. The computer program is fine. The printout is fine, but the printout doesn't compute. I mean, I still have to do everything that that computer did manually to come out with the answer. So it hasn't really, it's been something to look at and a, and a place to start. And particularly since we have two engineering firms that said it should be closed. I wanted to look at that and see how they arrived at that conclusion. And from that standpoint, obviously it was a place to start. But as far as actually doing crunching the numbers, I still have to do it manually or get my own computer program, but it's not that hard to do it manually.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could, I mean, we could maybe put something on the agenda, you could put something on the agenda now for next week.
As a placeholder?
As a placeholder and if, you know, if there's nothing ready, that way we get it on there, get it submitted to the paper and stuff.
Do you think there would be an action item next week or more of just a presentation?
More of just a presentation, I think.
Yeah, then a placeholder is just fine. All right, Dave, or?
Yeah, I mean, if, I, I like to keep this moving if, I mean, we talked about the agenda, two week notice technically today. We got a 24 hour notice, right?
Well, technically, but I do believe the spirit of our discussions has been to give one week of advance.
I tried with an ordinance to get that finalized and it didn't happen, so we got 24 hours.
You're, you're right, you did try with an ordinance. However, it was an agreement, just a gentleman's agreement across the table that it was gonna be that much in advance, so that the paper could have it and so that council could have it and the public.
But either way, it's more, because you, obviously as a presentation and, and no problem.
If we can move.
Because we do wanna, David's right, we want to move this forward.
Fine, I do too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Butch.
I think probably just another comment too. I mean, it says clearly here, there's been some swirl around if it's a pedestrian bridge, if it's not, if we're gonna rebuild it or, and all those, it says specifically, and I guess I wanna be specific cause I think, I'm not, we can have some discussion about what VJ did, but basically what we're agreeing to is what work, if any, would be required to return the bridge to the service level existing at the time of its closure. So it's very clear. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that.
I mean, I totally agree with that. You know, I think the, the whole debate with if we wanna change it into a pedestrian bridge, if someone wants to bring that up and talk about that, I don't think anyone really does.
Yeah.
That's a whole separate, you know, that's, that's a whole separate discussion that I, yeah. I'm, yeah, it's, it's restoring it to how it was seven months.
Before it closed.
I understand. I mean, I guess it depends what you mean by service level and I, I'm, you know, I, I think because it was 24 hour notice, because some of us wanted it on the agenda without announcing it earlier when the first agenda was published, or at least, um, not published, but made available to the newspaper and so on. I, I just think it's important that people know what we're talking about because while it might not be the majority, I don't think, Chris, it's accurate to say no one is interested in a pedestrian. There ha, there have been.
Talking about us, us up here, I don't know if.
I, I just wanna hear what the citizens, make sure that the citizens have an opportunity to discuss this. Expediting and moving quickly is fine with me. I've always been one who didn't want the ordinance that Dave was proposing because I like the flexibility of being able to bring things up like now when we need to. But I also wanna make sure, or when it, when it makes sense to expedite something, when there's interest in it and, and it makes sense. But there are people who probably didn't know we were moving in this direction who have expressed to one or more of us an interest in a pedestrian bridge very strongly over a vehicular one. So I just wanna give, I just wanna make sure that all of the citizens have an opportunity to weigh in so that we have the best information possible before we vote.
Yeah, and I think that, that that has been part of the process and I think that with the new figures, there has been a momentum towards vehicular and, and pedestrian reopening and that we haven't overly discussed it. We just kind of over, kinda moved that direction because of the.
One of our original meetings, we had a very large crowd and no one spoke of them, but I've only heard from one person in town that wants it pedestrian.
I, I get several and there's several in my area. No, it isn't, that isn't out there, just that.
Yeah, it's, it's not relevant.
Because, yeah, it's, my proposal is to bring it back to what it was before it was closed. If you really wanna turn that into a pedestrian bridge, you've got a lot more to consider than just the decking. You've got the rails on both sides that don't meet the requirements for pedestrian and so forth. So if you decide that you wanna make a pedestrian bridge, that probably won't happen this fall.
Yeah, and I guess that was my point, just we're all clear. What his proposal is, is exactly that, returning to the service level, basically.
Yes.
It's a pedestrian bridge right now. I mean, yeah, I mean.
Before it was closed, he's.
Right, no, I know, but even if you, if you do these minor repairs and, and the council chooses to not let vehicles go over, that's a decision that council can make and it will cost nothing because it's a pedestrian bridge.
That's how it's functioning today.
How it's functioning right now, so it's, yeah, for this, it's, it's, um, yeah.
Yeah, it leans, it leans us in a direction, but doesn't lock us into a direction. More council discussion. This will be a roll call vote if we're ready. Roll call vote, please.
President Chek.
Yes.
Walt Stein.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Nyandor.
Yes.
Uh, resolution 15 dash 124 is unanimously approved and thank you, Mr. K. Our first study session agenda item is a review of our curbside recycling program. The trends look very good. Mr. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up to some changes we did in the program last year to try to encourage more participation at the residential level for recycling. Before this, we had curbside recycling where folks had to sort it out. There was kind of a limited amount of, of what could be taken. And we've gone to taking more at the curb through a rented 35, 65, or in some cases 95 gallon bin. So you can see from the trends that we have gained in participations and tonnage recycled. And I'll turn it over to Mike to share more of the details and the public work story of what's been happening. He made some very colorful graphs. Just graphs, no charts?
I guess one could be considered a chart with the stacked bars. I wanna get technical.
Okay, so we have 15 to 18 months of data now. And it was back in about April of 2014 that we began the co-mingling program, curbside. And so during those first six months or so, we saw pretty steady growth upward as far as the volume or the tonnage of material co-mingled and processed on a monthly basis. Getting into about a year ago, seems like we've kinda leveled off at 24 to 25 tons per month. And that is, is probably about where we're going to be. May see some additional growth, but I, I don't expect to see it grow by leaps and bounds at this, at this juncture. As far as residents and businesses that have been transitioning from totes over to the city supplied containers, they're 35 and 65 gallons. That has continued to, to grow steadily to the point where we have, I think it's about 25% of our customers, residential customers are now using the city supplied 35 and 65 gallon containers. Anticipate that we're gonna continue to have steady growth probably through next year.
Can you talk about what you're seeing at the recycle center? How operations there have changed, if at all?
As far as the, the growth in, in the tonnage collected curbside, you know, from when we started the program, you know, we've seen an increase from 18, around 18 to around 25 tons per month. Are we seeing a corresponding decrease at the recycling center? I don't have those numbers. I tend to doubt that it's seven tons decrease, but I know that there is some decrease because I myself no longer go to the recycling center on a weekly basis. But I still do go occasionally to take my glass containers out there as well as cardboard boxes. And we do have one new product that we are accepting out there that I think will be a great benefit to the community and that is styrofoam. That, I was gonna bring a prop in because I have got a new, like vacuum cleaner, but it was the box it came in, it had all the styrofoam packing and, and that packing itself would have been enough to fill up my 35 gallon garbage container and yet it weighs next to nothing. So, we're happy to announce that we have added the collection of styrofoams. We'd always been taking and repurposing styrofoam peanuts, but now.
that has offset the 30-some dollars, 33-some dollars you pay a ton for garbage compared to recycling, and how that's offset each other, and if, if we're losing money by doing this, gaining money by doing this, it's a wash, you know, that kind of thing.
You always lose money recycling, it is, the cheapest way to do it is have zero recycling program, zero resources committed to it, and facilities, equipment, and personnel, but that is, is, one, there is a legal mandate to recycle, and that is not being a good steward of the environment either, so what we try to do is find economical and value-added ways to decrease the amount of garbage going into the landfill, and to that effort, we, we try to find economical ways to, to do this, so.
Right, I guess my question was, before we bought the truck that could do that, everyone took everything to the recycling center, and then we actually could sell those and make some money back off selling pure plastic, pure cardboard, pure whatever, now we're actually paying a company to take that.
That's correct.
And I would like to see how much more thousands of dollars that is costing the city, just to, just to see it.
Or, or on the inverse, has it reduced our, our tonnage of?
I'd assume it's reduced the garbage tonnage some, but has it reduced it enough to offset the cost of the new program, or not, I mean, that's.
Well, simply going to a co-mingle program is, is a, cost savings in equipment, before we had a specialized truck, that was a single-purpose truck, that actually costs more than the vehicle that we're using today, which can be used on the off weeks for doing garbage trouts and, and other things one needed, so we gain efficiency there, anytime we don't have to use manpower to sort materials, we gain efficiency, we gain, you know, it's more cost-effective, so, you know, tho, those all factor into the equation, recycled materials are a commodity, the price fluctuates, just like oil, gold, silver, minerals, corn, soybeans, the price fluctuates, as demand fluctuates, so it is somewhat of a, of a constantly moving target, and that's where we focus in on the bigger picture, the cost of labor, equipment, and facilities, and in that sense, we're, we're definitely moving in the right direction.
So it must, it takes less time to collect the recycling now than it used to?
Takes much less time to rec, collect recycling than it used to with sorting.
And then those staff are able to do other duties that they normally weren't able to.
So before, every stop would take over a minute, because they would, all the recycling would be mingled anyway, typically.
Yeah, yeah.
And so they would have to go to different parts of the truck, put it in, then when they'd unload the truck, they'd do that manually, now, they get out, hook it up, dump it, go on to the next, so when they're done, they get to help backfill in other solid waste issues, other streets, projects, those things like that, and the other thing, Mike, we just got notice about landfill tipping fees going up.
This, past July, the tipping fee went up $1 a ton, and next July, it will go up $2 a ton, so that was inevitable.
But it's trying to offset that.
Right, and that's kind of why I wanted to see the garbage, too, but we don't have a chart for that, but.
Well, the garbage is hard when you keep adding the homes that we're adding, it's hard to say that we've offset how much, because your trend in garbage keeps going up as your community grows, because we're continuing to add customers.
Definitely, but you should kind of, if we picked up seven or eight more tons of recycling, garbage shouldn't continue at the same rate that it was going, I mean, but.
Theoretically, but then when you have the construction dumpsters, and, and you have different things going on, how much rain events, that kind of thing, it's kind of hard to track, but your point is a good point, in that it's helping pay for itself, basically.
Yeah, that's just what, I'm, I mean, I think the program's great, it obviously is used widely across the city, and, you know, a lot of people, I think, use the bi-weekly garbage, because they have recycling, so you don't have to have a garbage can every single week, I was just kind of interested in how it all kind of played out.
Right, some nice little succinct paragraph that says, we create, we had, we save money off the truck, we have the landfills going up, and that kind of thing, and.
How many man-hours do we save?
Yeah, we're saving some man-hours here, but, you know, etc.
Prove the concept, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be interested if we're, if only 25% of the eligible accounts are using it, you know, is there a, you know, maybe as that goes up, you know, we'll continue?
Well, many, many more, a, a much, much higher percentage of our population is recycling, they're still using the 18-gallon totes.
Do you have a guess, like, is it 10% are still using the green totes, 50%, 15%, I mean, it, it, I guess, it's a guess, I mean.
We used to count stops, we can look.
I guess I'll just look.
We used to track the total number of stops.
You know, recycling's going up, garbage's going down, costs is the differential in costs, yeah.
You know, I've definitely gone from the big container, down to the little container, because I got a big recycling container, now I used to never recycle, I just never did.
It'd be, it'd be good to show that kind of information to some people, or encourage to recycle, and.
You know, a lot of it is, you know, recycling is, you know, first, it's pretty much free, where a lot of towns, you know, charge, whereas, you know, so that, that hurts some of the offset, where Cedar, I don't think Cedar Falls has their own, city doesn't, they, they have a private company.
Recycle, right.
That's like, you know, 20, they charge like 20 bucks a month at least, I mean, so it's, we got a pretty good deal here, but, you know, I mean, there's, there's a cost to it.
But it's all based into your garbage, solid waste.
Right.
You're paying.
Some of it is, and that's because we always want to make it more economical for the customer to recycle, than to simply throw it away, so there is some price support for the recycling program through, through your, your solid waste fees.
Yeah.
There is some peer pressure going on out there, I had a, a neighbor come in and, and sign up for, I'm not sure if he got a 35 or 65-gallon container, and that's because enough of his neighbors had it, he was starting to feel left out, so, that, that's, you know, can be a good thing, a little bit of neighborhood peer pressure there.
And the drive is the environment, so, which you acknowledged earlier, but we want to take care of the environment, so, thank you.
Information for people, if they're watching, how do they sign up, or can they?
Come to City Hall. Call us.
Yep, they can call either Public Services or Public Works Administration, and we get you set up with, you know, the larger 35 or 65-gallon recycling containers.
You would just call in, and they'll set it up, and you don't have to come down?
No, you do not, don't, do not have to come down, you can phone it in.
And it's every other week now, that changed in July, right?
That's right.
Instead of twice a month, which would mess me up every time.
Right, so you get two extra pickups a year, and it's, yep, every other week?
I'm just happier it's every other week, so I don't have to look at my calendar.
Is it last week or not?
Well, that's why it's very important to clip and save your, your calendar, we do a three-month calendar every quarter in the Public Works newsletter, and we also do a utility bill flyer that has, I believe it's a six-month calendar, so.
I think some of the efficiencies, though, that you talked about with regard to the trucks and pickup, we kind of diminish ourselves, and I know it's to try to accommodate and transition for those people who aren't, you know, wanting to get a, pay for the rental of the recycling barrel, but, you know, I, I think I see, and this is just anecdotal, but it seems to me there are increasing numbers of not just the totes, but, you know, someone's own garbage can that they're using for recycling, and we must be picking those up, even though it's not supposed to be in there, right, so, I mean, it seems to me there are some physical issues related to that, in terms of just, you said, you chose the totes, because they're relatively easy to pick up and get into the new trucks, so, you know, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we standardize that at some point in time, because I think that takes away some efficiency that we've gained.
I, I, I think you, you hit on it there, at some point in time, and when is the right time to do that, we had about 35 to 40% of our, of our customers using the city's garbage container, and at that point, because of some changes in, in vehicles and equipment that we're going to be purchasing, the decision was made that it was in the best interest of the, of the community, and the efficiency and economics of it, to require the rest of our customers to utilize the city container, at some point, we may need to have that discussion with the recycling program as well, I'm not advocating that we do that now, or, or anytime soon, but I think at some point, it, it will probably need to come up for discussion.
And for the folks who aren't using totes, I mean, and are just putting a regular trash, I mean, do we have any communication with them, to ask them to use what is supposed to be being used?
Which of the big blue, I mean.
Well, no, not necessarily, I'm even talking about somebody who doesn't use a tote, and they just go to Walmart and buy a, you know, a, yeah, or, or a plastic one, and that's what they put their recycling in, and we must be picking it up.
I, I think if it's loaded up with, like, plastic bottles and stuff, and it's not too heavy, we're going to take care of it, if it's full of newspapers and magazines, we're going to leave it behind.
Okay.
I thought when we switched, we kind of made a rule, if there's like two totes is okay, but if people have six or seven totes out there, they're going to get a note that they need to get a blue.
That was always unlimited, I thought, you could have.
It was, but I thought when we switched over, we kind of talked about.
I don't think it was ever restricted, but I think we, we had in our mind that it was like one tote, or a recycle bin, plus an extra tote, you know, maybe, you know, because it was the holidays or something, but we were seeing where some people are using two or three totes, or a couple totes, and, and a garbage container, and, and that, you know, diminishes our efficiency, and kind of goes beyond what the, the spirit of the program was set up to be, we didn't want to get into mandating it, but we, I guess we're not expecting that some people would continue to use two or three totes in lieu of, of getting a 65-gallon or 35-gallon container.
The reason, the reason people still have totes, is $2 a month to get the blue container, right, for recycling?
It, it is, but it's also convenient to put in the trunk of your car and go to the recycling center.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, it's very convenient, but the totes are free, so, I mean, that's, might be, if you have a small amount of recycling, your tote is absolutely free, to green tote and put it out there.
Yes.
If you have enough, it is $2, so, you know, I always kind of go back, do I pay the $2, and then get a, go back to my garbage to do every other week, or that kind of thing?
Well, we would certainly hope that if you're consistently putting out multiple totes, or using a larger garbage container for recycling, that, you know, you would, you would get a city 65 or 35-gallon container, and pay the $2 a month.
Hopefully, the peer group pressure will help us clean this up a little bit, I can see and feel the front page of the Waverly newspaper, doesn't mean it'll happen, right, Eric?
I'll know before, yeah.
We'll see.
Yeah, any last thoughts before we move on? Discussion item number two is a discussion of our social media, particularly the Facebook approach, Administrator, I noticed you, you gave us a lot of information here, would you like to begin the conversation?
Sure, so tonight, to give some more information and background on our approach to social media here, we have a bunch of material that was actually drafted up by our summer intern from Wortburg, who knew this stuff, and, and did very well with it, and then left us some information on, so, in the packet, the first item is our current terms of use for anyone on the city's Facebook page, we are set up as a government organization, and so we aren't like an individual, like most people are, we're more run by a number of people, and so it's communicating with the city, and so we have a, we have a policy that's very similar to many other policies across the state, this one comes primarily from Ames, we've also used a lot of information from Ankeny, but this basically says how people are to behave on the city's page, and what will be removed if it is not in agreement with our terms of use, so that's some background there, then the next page here, page two, is just kind of some general notes for us inside, how to kind of keep it going, so after Kate left, we don't have a dedicated person to this now, so Valerie in our office, and Paige in Bill's office, work on generating some content, checking on the page each day, addressing comments or private messages, and getting them to the right people, we're using it very similar to, you know, press releases, but then we're also using it similar to our Ask the City email account, where when issues or questions come in, we address them to the right department or the right individuals, so we can engage with those folks and get them answers, so, just some example posts that Kate brought together for our folks here in town, as we work on generating content, and I think that's the biggest challenge we run into, is trying to find the right type of things to post, and to push out there, and then to reshare from other Facebooks, I know the police department does a nice job, and the library does a nice job, because they'll have a lot of programming, and they'll have a lot of events, or things like that, to share, and so we'll try to work with them on that, if you scroll down to page five, I think, this is more of our social media plan, so this is more of, starting in August after Kate left, this is what Valerie and Kate, and, excuse me, Paige work on now, to really seek out that information from directors and others in the city, look for ways to generate that content, and keep, keep the page active, and keep the page going, and we talk about how to respond, we have filters, so people can post profanity, and it automatically gets rejected, we can see it as administrators, so we know that something's been posted, but it never goes public, and that's for good messages, people understand here, and so really, it's, for us, it's, it's been a lot about understanding how to use it, understanding how to interact with folks through it, also setting expectations, we, we looked at Twitter, that was something that we did not pursue because of the instant discussion, kind of like texting, and because we don't have dedicated people, and because we want to be careful about people's evenings and weekends, we didn't want to, we didn't want to follow that, we've had, had some other Twitter accounts in the past, I know Brent did a lot with Twitter when he was here in Economic Development, and we have a case study of somebody who impersonated that to share with you, but right now, it's letting folks know that the page is monitored occasionally, we try to get back to them as we can, and try to use it again to push out good information, and respond to issues when they come up, as you go down the packet, starting on page eight, there's a email from Twitter Support, and Kate found that someone had used something that was very similar to one of our Twitter handles, to try to impersonate us, and then sell, was it drugs, or watches, or generic spam, and so this kind of talks about, it's Twitter's policies, and then Facebook's policies later, but what we did is, we basically said, someone's impersonating, impersonating our page, and they verified that we were a true government organization through our emails and, and phone calls, and then they went in, found the page, and shut it down, and so when things like that come up, we really try to work with Facebook or Twitter, so that they can follow through their own policies, because they do this all day long, we had a Facebook page come up that initially started billing itself as a City of Waverly Facebook page, and it wasn't a City of Waverly page, and so we met with the owner of that page to get it turned into more of a community support page, a community partnership page, because we want to be careful in who says they're the City of Waverly, and who is the City of Waverly, and so we've worked on, I think we've eliminated the pool Facebook page, there's been some other pages in your area that I think we've eliminated, to try to really pare it down, so that we had. we didn't want to, we didn't want to follow that. We've had, had some other Twitter accounts in the past, I know Brent did a lot with Twitter when he was here in Economic Development, and we have a case study of somebody who impersonated that to share with you. But right now it's letting folks know that the page is monitored occasionally, we try to get back to them as we can and try to use it again to push out good information and respond to issues when they come up. As you go down the packet, starting on page eight, there's an email from Twitter Support, and Kate found that someone had used something that was very similar to one of our Twitter handles to try to impersonate us and then sell, was it drugs or watches or generic spam? And so this kind of talks about, it's Twitter's policies and then Facebook's policies later, but what we did is we basically said someone's impersonating, impersonating our page, and they verified that we were a true government organization through our emails and, and phone calls, and then they went in, found the page and shut it down. And so, when things like that come up, we really try to work with Facebook or Twitter so that they can follow through their own policies, because they do this all day long. We had a Facebook page come up that initially started billing itself as a City of Waverly Facebook page, and it wasn't a City of Waverly page, and so we met with the owner of that page to get it turned into more of a community support page, a community partnership page, because we want to be careful in who says they're the City of Waverly and who is the City of Waverly. And so we've worked on, I think we've eliminated the pool Facebook page, there's been some other pages in your area that I think we've eliminated to try to really pare it down so that we had a cohesive voice within social media. So that's why we've really stuck with police, library and the City of Waverly, and that things come through that. And so that way we can manage it a lot better, and so people know that if they're seeing something from the City of Waverly, it is the City of Waverly. So, we're, we'll keep working on that. In the local area, when things like that come up, we find it's best to meet with that person to see what they're trying to accomplish and get those pages revised so that it's not showing as a City of Waverly page when it isn't, so. That was some of the information, I'm sure there are plenty of questions on this, but right now we do not have an intern, so we're trying to address this the best we can as we have the time to do it, knowing that social media never sleeps, so.
Well, thank you, but let's take a few minutes here too, we got a lot of social media good experts here. Reflections on what you're hearing?
I think what we do as a city is good, I think what you touched on in the end is more of the problem when a citizen puts out their, the official City of Waverly park page or whatever it may be, and then tells people in replies that a city staff person is running the page and reiterates that over and over again.
Right.
And that's not true, that's a problem.
Yeah, I think that's, that was my concern or, that was one of the requests I had for this discussion, I guess where, where are we at with that?
Well, that's, it's very, so that case, that page is a community page, it's a community partnership page, it's not showing as City of Waverly anything.
It says official.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say, it, it was changed, so it's not an official city page, and that, I believe all those references have been taken off, and we requested that. The issue is, and Bill can get into this here, we sought out the advice of other legal experts and also media experts, and there is a very fine line as to what's impersonation and what's illegal and what's freedom of speech. And so it's very difficult to draft some sort of policy on what somebody else should and shouldn't do on their page. And that's why we've, you know, in the Twitter case, I put that up here to show, here's impersonation, that's against terms of use, take it down. In the other case, it's, okay, we know who this individual is, we can work with this individual, let's ask him to change it, and they did. And so that's where I think you have to kind of take these case by case really and try to address them as they come up.
Yeah, I appreciate you addressing it, because, I mean, it was clearly stated that there was a meet and greet for the city council members, and, you know, so not all of them were invited because not all of them are Facebook members and so forth, and I found it to be really unprofessional, so I appreciate you addressing it.
Well, and, and that's another thing we should touch on is that anybody can be invited to anything, and so a meet and greet is generally not called by the city because it's for ministerial and social purposes. And so that's something where any, any, any group organization, Indian individual or homeowners association can say, we'd like to have a city council meet and greet and invite council or council and staff or whomever they want to it, because it's outside of, you know.
Mine too, but it came from the official City of Waverly Facebook page.
Yeah, it's just kind of bad timing for.
Right, probably not the right way to approach it, however, again, it, it is one of those where in the, when it's something going on in the community, you have to address it in such a way that everybody can walk away feeling like this can be worked out.
I think it can be, I mean, it's kind of weird, we have two pages for the same thing now, and one still does say official page of that park. The other one's got, you know, five thousand likes and one has a hundred.
Right.
Big deal, but when someone asks the question of the page and you get back and says, Tab knows that this page exists and so and so's doing the work on it.
And, and there's a difference in knowing something exists and running something and operating something, and so that's why for us it was important then following that weekend to get in and say, okay, let's sit down and discuss this, how can we fix the issue? So it doesn't continue.
It went on for more than a weekend, but.
I think it was Labor Day weekend.
Glad it got straightened out, but it was, there was more than just one person that asked and it got repeated around town to many people, that city staff was specifically running that page and so.
So, yeah, I think it gets back to just kind of what presence do we want to have? What presence, you know, we can talk all day about what presence should others have, what control do we have over that? Not very much, and so that's where we have to be consistent with the messaging that we put out of the official channels.
And I agree with that, yeah, and you can't control what individuals say about anybody, anything, all that kind of stuff. I would just say when it comes to impersonating the city, that's different than, you can't control what someone says about our city. We can control when someone impersonates our city.
Depending on the level of impersonation, unfortunately, just purely by terms of use, I mean, that's the hard part.
Plenty examples of, of, you go on Twitter, President parody accounts or any, any public figure, you can make a parody account and that's totally, yeah, you're not impersonating, but it's, yeah, you can totally do that. I mean, it's, like you said, it's, it's a, it's a very fine line between, yeah, very fine line.
But it's good to see, sorry, it's good to see the, the policy and it, and it looks pretty cut and dried, you know, these are the pages that are supported by the city and, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it's good that you guys went down to, you know, pared something down, because it's, it's.
It's too much, you know, everybody wants a presence, but you can't manage it.
And I like that you guys put on, when, I don't know if, when you guys started doing that, but the name of the person who did the post, not that, be accurate or not, but I'm glad that, that's.
It's a way for us to identify who owns it, so that if there are questions or issues or where it came from, and again, that was Kate's idea, she was spectacular. We weren't exactly sure what she did, she just kept producing copious amounts of work and posting, and when she left, it kind of dried up, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys need help, you know, like, like says the police department and the library, they've been doing, you guys have been running those pages forever, and, I mean, they've always done a real good job.
Have we, you know, when we moved, I know when you redid the website and we went with, I think Spinutech to do that, there are other companies in the Cedar Valley that do websites, obviously, but they also do content management, so. There are companies out there that I know of who you pay them X amount of dollars a month, just like we do with Spinutech, but they also provide your content for you, you know, you could send them something once a week with stuff you wanted out every week and they will put that out for you and keep track of all the stats and do all those things and.
Yeah.
It would be fairly similar to what we're paying right now, I think, but.
That's what we'd like, we're not paying anything right now for that service.
For that service, but we are paying a monthly fee.
Just sure, for your website.
Right.
Hosting and maintenance and servers, and, and so what we've found is, we have some staff who are good at it and who have the capacity, but the challenge is really just coming up with, sitting down and making the time to come up with just what to post. And so whoever's managing it, the management part is great, but right now it's just.
Well, that's what these companies are good at, they have marketing people that specifically work with cities and companies and they will help you get content and, and that, that's part of their whole website, online presence fee.
That's a good point, there's a whole difference, like Ambridge would be the, the other category of just totally helping with your branding and.
Right.
And et cetera, that's a whole different level.
Companies out there that'll.
Spinutech just.
Will build you a website, get you a Facebook page, post your website and your Facebook page and help you market yourself that way, and that's.
But that's a good point, I think, but again, we aren't paying as much as you'd have to pay for an Ambridge to do all that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the setup we have now is just web, web only, but definitely something that can be looked at in the future.
Others who want to weigh in, Mr. Lampy, and Ms. Wallstein.
Not really.
Okay. Randy, anything, okay. If there's no more weighing in, it's a helpful discussion, thank you David for your contributions there. Staff comments?
We'll be getting the agenda out for next Monday, including, which has left the building, but including that report if it's available. That's going to be a heavier agenda just with the timing of this month and the, the meetings back to back, but that should be out tomorrow if I get my act together and get everything wrapped up. Carla, remind me. And I'll look to our staff if there are any other staff comments this evening.
Think it's necessary for Bill to say something?
A what?
That's it, that's enough.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other staff comments, city council comments from this side, Dan, David.
I don't have much, no.
This side? Edie?
I would, I would just encourage people who are interested in the Green Bridge that, that you, we continue to hear from you on whatever side or perspective you have and, so that we can, I'll speak for myself, I guess, so I can have as much information as possible as we move forward here with some important decisions.
Councilman Gade?
I just want to dovetail off what I said last weekend, what Dwayne brought up about the dry run and my whole neighborhood being backed up still. Can we get a pump in there and just pump it out, so my.
We'll have our guys go and look at it tomorrow and try to dry it out.
I know we did close the gates, which was nice because that was causing some major problems with people flying through four, three, four feet of water and. Some people were doing that for fun, but still it's dangerous.
Not anymore, right?
Yeah, right.
You said something about changing the grate, doing something so that water drains now or will drain?
Yeah, I have a progress meeting tomorrow with them and I'll talk to them about getting their pump operational again. I don't want us pumping it because it's a twenty-four hour operation because the water from Wortburg.
Was right into that first.
Never ends.
Right, yeah, I know.
They're working downstream, they need to keep it dry, so what they're doing in this location is they're pumping it into the storm sewer system further to the east, which takes it directly to the river, so. I want PCI to take care of this and we'll have that conversation tomorrow.
If you could set, I mean, I know Wortburg comes down at, on second or third on the, in the downslope that we now have the gates closed maybe they're open now, but it, it fills up just from the Wortburg water always coming.
Right.
But then it backs up where it never used to, I mean, the block between third and fourth and fourth and fifth always used to be dry.
That's right, because they have to basically create an impoundment in order for them to, to generate enough depth in order for them to pump. So, that's why it's backed up is because they have it, it basically bermed to create the impoundment to facilitate the pumping. We had a discussion previously with them about this situation, and we'll have it again tomorrow that they need to, need to take some action on it. Right now, they've got every available resource working on getting Fourth Street open as fast as possible.
With the design, so I'm assuming the new design, that Wortburg pipe will still be underground, but just kind of be channeled the flow right in the dry run like normal and.
Right.
It won't kind of fill up, well, that street won't be a through street, it will be underneath, but.
Third Avenue will have a box gully at that point, but at Second Avenue Southwest, there used to be a diversion chamber, so the water from Wortburg would, would get to Seventh Avenue Southwest, and then it would be diverted over to the Cedar River. Because we deepen the channel, that diversion won't occur anymore and the water will continue all the way down to the river, so the channel will constantly be wet from Third Avenue Northwest all the way down to First Street Southwest, and that's, that's a change from the past.
Would that be usual, I guess, would that be normal for a business to be continually running water into a, I mean, into a situation like that?
Would they be allowed to do it today? Probably not.
Is that city water or is that a well? They have their own well?
They have a DNR permit.
But it's city water or is it?
It, it's groundwater, they have their own well system, they're pumping and dumping.
Which is what we do at the fire station.
Which would not be allowed today.
Either.
That probably goes right into the river.
Yeah, it goes right into the river, I guess I didn't know that.
Yeah, it causes nitrate issues in the river.
But that's why the Third Avenue gully has always been full of water, it's because Wortburg comes right down and empties.
Chilling water.
All the time, so, and it's, if it dry run didn't stay clean, it backed up and that's, and now that's fills up even more, but.
I mean, go tubing down it.
You wouldn't want a tube in that stuff.
I was just wondering about mosquitoes in the summertime and stuff, I don't know.
It's year round, yeah.
Thank you, Wes. Mr. Diandorf.
Well, thanks again for the opportunity, I, I am very interested in the Green Bridge, being a Southeast resident, so I think what you did tonight is an excellent start, so.
Thank you, we.
Keep on it.
We shall.
Looks like you are.
Cross our hearts. May I all note, just to say that in light of Pope Francis' just completed visit to this country, he is asking us to, as a country, to be, to show compassion with one another and humility in all that we do. I think I would add into there that every email we write and every little discussion and judgment we make to another is included in this elevation talk that we've been receiving. We have the power in our hands to either build up or to tear down, it's amazing how much power we have, and our small-town values to build up, but also to do so with humility and compassion with an eye on the common good, which the Pope also brought us to. So as the Pope leaves our country, let us thank him for trying to take our country to the higher ground and we'll try to live on in the best spirit of what he brought to us. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
Second? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.